Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District July 27th Board Meeting. I am AESD Board President Juan Giber Alvarez and I call this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Para español puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera: Llame al 413-729-2545. Cuando se le pida presiona el pin o la clave 985-658-673 y la tecla numeral. Any member of the public has an opportunity to address the board in person during the agendized public comment session, or they may choose to submit their public comments online by 12 PM or in person by 6:30 PM today. Comments submitted online will be read during the appropriate agendized public comment session. Let's begin with roll call. To my right, we have Board Member Mark A. Lopez.
Present.
Board Member Dr. Paulo Macallas.
Present.
Board Member Ryan Ruelis.
Present.
And then we have Board Clerk Jackie Philbeck joining us via telephonic conference.
Here.
And then I'm Board President Juan Alvarez. Let's move on to Item 1B, Public Speakers for closed session agenda items. I believe there are no comments, okay? Item 2, adjournment to closed session. Can I have a motion, get a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Ruelis.
Second.
Okay, motion Ruelis, second. Lopez, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Let's adjourn to closed session.
Hello?
Hi Jackie, it's Brian. Can you hear me?
Uh, I think I'm getting a echo.
Okay, um, I'll check to make sure. Okay, great. Alright, we'll begin in a minute.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District July 27th Board Meeting. I am A E S D Board President Juan Giber Alvarez, and I call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Uh, Spanish interpretation of the board meeting is available to attendees. Para español, puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera: Llame al cuatro uno tres siete dos nueve dos cinco cuatro cinco. Cuando se le pida, presione el pin o la clave nueve ocho cinco seis cinco ocho seis siete tres y la tecla numeral. Let's begin with the flags. Dr. Downing will lead us.
Please stand.
Thank you. Let's move on to introductions and a roll call. To my right, I have Board Member Mark A. Lopez.
Good evening, everyone, present.
Okay, we have Dr. Paulo Macallas.
Good evening, everyone.
Board Member Ryan Willis.
Hello.
Uh, we have Board Clerk Jackie Philbeck on the phone.
Hello, everyone from Turkey Run, NPL.
Alright, I'm Juan Alvarez. Okay, um, and then to my left, we have Dr. Christopher Downing, our Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
We have Dr. Mary Grace, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services.
Hello, everyone.
We have Deana Meland, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good evening.
We have Jessie Chaveria, Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services.
Good evening, everyone.
And then to my right, we have Senior Director of School Safety and Operations, Tracy Golden.
Good evening.
We have Yessenia Jureño, our Senior Administrative Assistant.
Good evening.
In the back, we have Mary Madrigal and Jasmine Anaya, our interpreters. And then, um, we have to my right, Janice Cato, our Technology Support Technician. And I believe in the booth in the back, we have Brian Brooks and Benjamin Hausman, our Media Production Specialist. Welcome, everybody. Alright, let's move on to the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved? Second.
Uh, motion, uh, Macalla, second. Willis, any discussion? Alright, all in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
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 Okay, any, uh, no's? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries, five zero. Uh, item four, Special Order of Business, there is none. Let's move on to news and updates. Five A, Parent Leadership Group Updates, there are no parent leadership group updates. Five B, Association Updates, there are no association updates. And five C, District News and Updates, Communication and Public Information. Uh, there's a district news and update by Dr. Christopher Downing, our Superintendent.
Alright, thank you, Board President. Uh, we just wanted to share with our families and community, uh, next slide, please, that, uh, we will begin registration for our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, now called Anaheim Succeeds. The program is going to begin on August the eleventh, and we're going to have open enrollment sessions on August 5th, 9th, and 10th, from 10 AM to 2 PM. We'll be sending this information out, uh, to our families in our family letter. We'll also be having information on our website, and we would ask any interested parents to contact your child's school and ask for the Anaheim Succeeds Leadership Assistant. This program is going to provide the opportunity for students to have a nine-hour school day, and we're really excited about the enrichment programs that will be offered. So, parents, please take advantage of this opportunity. Also, if you wait until the school year begins, you can still register your children. Registration will take place throughout the year, but we wanted to inform our families and the community of this great opportunity. And in late June, A E S D was excited to learn that the readers of the Parenting OC Magazine nominated our district in the 20th Annual Readers' Choice Awards in the Best North OC School District category. We encourage staff, families, and all members of the community to vote for our district through the OC Parenting website during the voting round, which ended on July 10th. And we were informed on July 19th that Parenting OC is now recognizing A E S D as the best North OC school district. So, we are extremely proud. And on behalf of our stakeholders, we are appreciative to Parenting OC. And, uh, again, we wanted to share this with our board members. We will also be posting this to our website and sharing it in communications. But, uh, thank you, Board, for your support, and thank you to all the staff and community members and our families who truly make us an amazing district, so, thank you.
Thank you, great news. Alright, moving to item six, Public Speakers on Agenda or Non-Agenda Items. Do you have any public speakers? There are none, okay. Alright, item seven, Superintendent's Report and Public Hearings. Oh, there isn't?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, come on up.
Good evening, thank you. I'm sorry for, like I said, I just walked in a little late. I got done with work myself. So, I am a parent, uh, my son is- Written comments, up to 500 words, may have been submitted online via this form. They must have been received by 12:00 PM on Wednesday, July 27th. On the, on the form, you could have selected Public Hearing Agenda Item, and comments submitted will be read aloud if we have any today by our designee. Were there any comments submitted? Okay, alright, hearing, there are no comments for the hearing. I close this hearing and give notice that the vote on this item is scheduled for August 17th, 2022, at our regular board meeting. Item B, 45-day revised budget report. Jesse Chaveria, Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services.
So, as a result of the balance in public school systems stabilization account, the statutory limitation on school district reserves was triggered for the 2223 budget period. Pursuant to Education 42127, the district reserve cap requires that a school district's adopted or revised budget should not contain a combined assigned or unassigned ending general fund balance of more than 10% of those funds. With that in mind, if you recall, the Board approved the resolution in May to commit funds to make the general fund balance be under that 10% requirement. At that time, the district's reserve was under 10%, and it was unknown exactly what amounts would be coming to our district. Those amounts are known now because the state did approve a budget at the end of June, and so, we want now to make a revision to designate some of those reserves as committed. So, if you look at this slide, you look at the top of it, that's what shows in our SACS report based on the Board-approved budget on June 22nd. So, if you look under Other Commitments, we did not have anything there, although the Board had already made a, passed the resolution to commit some things. So, our recommendation is the bottom piece, which will show in our SACS report, under Other Commitments. You will see that we're recommending that supplemental and concentration funds to support LCAP goals be 6.9 million. Decline in Enrollment Mitigation be 6.8 million. Technology Refresh be 4.8 million. In early retirement incentive expenses, 2.5 million. The total amount that we need to, that is part of the reserve that we need to commit is 21,897,476. Before moving on to the 45-day revision, I do want to ask the Board if there are any questions in regards to making this designation in terms of committing these reserves.
Board Member Philbeck, do you have any questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so as you know, the state did approve a budget after we, the Board, adopted its budget here, so that it did change some of the revenue for us. So, now I'm going to highlight some of those changes for you. In terms of ongoing revenue, we did have an increase to the LCFF. There's an LCFF add-on to TK as well as transportation. There's increased funding for special education. The revenues for ELOP are now known, and the new revenue projections for lottery as well. In terms of one-time, there are two block grants that were approved by the state. One is called the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant, and the other one, it's the Arts, Music, and Instructional Materials Discretionary Block Grant. So, under the, go ahead.
I have a question, I'm sorry. Jesse, could you just explain briefly again how the lottery works?
Uh, yes, the-
The revenue?
Yeah, the revenue of the lottery comes to us, it's based on the sales of the, you know, of the lottery tickets and the lottery things that happen throughout the state. There's a certain amount that gets given to the districts, right? For us, I'll get to a slide, I believe it was $163 unrestricted, and on the restricted side was $63, and that's changing a few dollars. It's going from 163 to 170, and from 63 to 65. And these are funds to be used in particular for instructional materials. We typically use these funds for our book adoptions. About four and a half million dollars that we kind of saved through receiving those funds were used for the last science adoption.
And how do they, how often are, how are they supplied to us? I'm sorry, I can't remember. I knew that once, but I can't remember.
Uh, we-
Probably we get it, or it come in.
We get them on a yearly basis, and we don't always spend them all out because they can carry over, and knowing that we have book adoptions or we are, you know, in terms of our planning, and we know something's going to cost us four, five, six million dollars, and we try to save some of those funds in order to support us in getting, making sure we are able to make those purchases.
Thank you.
So, under LCFF, so there's a total of 12.84%, which is a combination of the cost of living adjustment as well as an increase to the base of 6.28%. When the Board approved the budget in June, we did include about 9.8% of that already in terms of our revenue, so the difference is about 3%. I put in there what the base grants are now, which is K3, 9,132, and four through six, 9,269. We also get an additional $950 for K through third grade, based, added to that base grant. And then for those ADA that qualifies for the supplemental grant or the concentration grant, you see the additional add-ons to that. Under LCFF, LCFF add-ons for TK and transportation, so there's a TK add-on for staff of $2,813 per TK ADA. As you know, part of TK, the requirement is that we have a ratio of 12 students to one adult. Since our classrooms have 24, we do have one teacher and one seven-hour instructional assistant to staff that. So, the state is providing some funding in order for us to do that. Those funds were already included in what the Board adopted back in June, but what was not included in that, in that proposal at the time was the transportation add-on, because this is brand-new that was added at the end of June. So, what this calls for is for us, the district, to receive 60% of our home-to-school costs, you know, in terms of transportation, of what we spent last year. So, based on our calculation of what we spent last year minus what we received, we're anticipating receiving a little bit over $2 million in additional revenue, and this is ongoing, right? But in order to get that, we do have to adopt the plan by April 1st of 2023 for transportation services, prioritizing the needs of our TK students, our kindergarten students, and our low-income students. Like I mentioned, there's an increase for special education. In terms of the base rate, it's going from $715 to 820 per ADA. There's some additional policy changes. I won't go through them. They're just additional things that, you know, that were put in place in terms of this funding as well. And then revenue for ELOP. The discussion that was happening at the state level was whether to, you know, to provide funds to those districts that had less than, you know, 80% or 75% on duplicate accounts. So, the agreement was anybody with 75% or more would receive $2,750 per ADA, which that puts us in that category. So, that's going up from 1,170 from this, the 2122 school year, which equates to about $32 million for us, okay? And those monies were already part of the budget that you adopted in June. They were included in there. We're just kind of now reporting that it's the actual amount. At the time, it was unknown whether we would get that full $2,750. And then in terms of the provisions of the program, they stay the same as the 2122, meaning that we need to offer it to all TK through sixth grade, unduplicated, but we're obligated to provide access to 50%. And mention the lottery, based on the question, is going from $163 to $170 unrestricted, and for restricted, from $65 to $67. And then in terms of one-time money, the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant. So, 7.9 billion was designated to be distributed to districts based on the 2122 P2 ADA multiplied by our duplicator pupil percentage. That's roughly about $2,400 per ADA. For us, it equates to about a little bit over $28 million, okay? Those funds can be used up to the year '27, '28, okay? So, it doesn't have to all be spent at once. And of course, these are not fully discretionary. They are to be used for increasing instructional learning time, implementing or expanding supports to close learning gaps, integrate pupil supports and staff support, and provide additional academic services such as diagnostic, progress monitoring, and benchmark assessments of our students. What is discretionary is the other, this other block grant, which is called the Arts, Music, and Instructional Materials Block Grant. 3.6 billion was set aside for that. That, those funds can be used up to the '25, '26 fiscal year, and is based on our P2 from last year, about $675 per ADA, which equates to a little bit over $8 million for us. Like it states there, for, these funds can be used for any operational cost, including but not limited to retirement and health care costs, as well as they can be used to obtain standards-aligned instructional materials, professional development, materials and trainings related to improving school climate, buying library books for a diverse book collection, and expenses related to COVID-19 pandemic. Now, for these monies to be used, we do have to come to the Board for you to approve an expenditure plan regarding those funds. So, what does all this information mean in terms of our revenue? So, on this slide, you see that LCFF sources, when we adopted the budget in June, we had $214 million in terms of projected revenue in LCFF. 45-day revision is 223.8 million. Federal revenue does not change from adopted budget to the 45-day revision. Under other state revenue, we had 56.7 million at adopted budget. 45-day revision, it grows to 91.3 million, basically the block grants that I mentioned. And then under other local revenue, stays the same. So, the overall effect, adopted budget, we were projecting 314.6 million. Now, we're projecting to receive $359 million. In terms of next steps, we will bring to the Board at the September 14th Board Meeting for your approval the unaudited actuals for '21, '22. We will also continue working on the audit process for '21, '22, and our auditors will come to you in early 2023 to present the findings. And then, of course, the first interim report for '22, '23 will be presented to you at the December 14th Board Meeting for your approval. And I will open it up for any questions you may have.
No questions, just a very thorough presentation as always, and thank you, State, for the money.
Yeah?
Okay, with that, is recommended the Board of Education approve the revisions to designate reserves as committed for the 2022-23 adopted budget and the 45-day revised budget report. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, Ruelis?
Second.
Second. Macallas, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries, five zero. And just so the public knows, these presentations that we went through today will be posted on the district website on the section that says Board of Education by tomorrow, okay? Let's move on to item eight, the Consent Calendar. Items listed under the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and are acted on by the Board in one motion. There is no discussion of these items unless a member of the Board, staff, or the public requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the Consent Calendar. Are there any items that we'd like to pull at this time?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I'm going to pull item 8A11 on page six.
Okay.
Okay, I will add, Mr. Lopez, you did 8A11 on page six, was that correct?
That's correct. Board Clerk Philbeck.
Okay, I will also need to pull 8B8 on page seven, and 8BE9 on page seven.
Okay, I got it. So, we have items 8A11 on page six, 8B8 on page seven, and 8BE9, right? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, any other items that we would like to pull? Okay, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the rest of the Consent Calendar items with the exceptions of items 8A11, 8B8, and 8BE9, which were just pulled and will be voted on separately. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, Ruelis?
Second.
Second. Lopez, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Under other state revenue, we had forty, fifty-six point seven million at adopted budget. Forty-five-day revision, it grows to ninety-one point three million, basically the block grants that I mentioned. And then under other local revenue, stays the same. So the overall effect, adopted budget, we were projecting three hundred and fourteen point six million. Now we're projecting to receive three hundred and fifty-nine million dollars. In terms of next steps, we will bring to the board at the September fourteenth Board Meeting for your approval the unaudited actuals for twenty-one, twenty-two. We will also continue working on the audit process for twenty-one, twenty-two, and our auditors will come to you in early two thousand twenty-three to present the findings. And then, of course, the first interim report for twenty-two, twenty-three will be presented to you at the December fourteenth Board Meeting for your approval. And I will open it up for any questions you may have.
No questions, just a very thorough presentation as always, and thank you, state, for the money.
Yeah. Good.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, is recommended the Board of Education approve the revisions to designate reserves as committed for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three adopted budget and the forty-five-day revised budget report. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, Ruelis?
Second.
Second. Macalas, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five, zero. And just so the public knows, these presentations that we went through today will be posted on the district website on the section that says Board of Education by tomorrow, okay? Let's move on to item eight, the Consent Calendar. Items listed under the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and are acted on by the board in one motion. There is no discussion of these items unless a member of the board, staff, or the public requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Are there any items that we'd like to pull at this time?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm gonna pull item eight, A eleven on page six.
Okay, I will add, Mr. Lopez, you did eight, A eleven on page six, was that correct?
That's correct. Board Clerk Philbeck.
Okay, I will also need to pull eight, B eight on page seven, and eight, B E nine on page seven.
Okay, I got it. So we have items eight, A eleven on page six, eight, B eight on page, what was that, seven? And eight, B nine, right? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, any other items that we would like to pull? Okay, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the, the rest of the consent calendar items with the exceptions of items eight, A eleven, eight, B eight, and eight, B nine, which were just pulled and will be voted on separately. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, Ruelis?
Second.
Second. Lopez, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, abstentions? Okay, motion carries five, zero. All right, so let's go ahead and look at item eight, A eleven. Item eight, A eleven, it's recommended the Board of Education approve payment to the Anaheim Family YMCA at two four zero South Euclid Street, Anaheim, California, nine two eight oh two, to cover the cost of monthly program fees for up to two hundred students participating in the before school childcare program at five school sites, as well as the cost for students attending the monthly program who do not qualify for free and reduced lunch. Effective August eleventh, two thousand twenty-two through June seventh, two thousand twenty-three, the monthly fees will be waived for participating families. The estimated payment amount is seven hundred ninety-six thousand. Do I, do I have a motion to discuss?
So moved.
A motion, Ruelis? All second, second Alvarez. All right, any discussion?
I, just the usual, I'm on the board, so I will be abstaining from actually all three items. Thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, let's go ahead and, all right, any, any other discussion? I was gonna, I was thinking maybe we could just do all three at the same time because of the same reasoning. Could we amend the motion? Would you be okay with amending the motion to include all three? Could we do that?
Yeah, go ahead and amend it.
All right, so.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to cut off, Mr. Lopez. I didn't hear his comment. Was he abstaining also?
I was gonna say ditto.
Ditto, okay.
Oh, oh, okay, all right, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Mark.
So, remember, Ruelis agrees to amend the motion to include all three items in the same motion to vote on, pending the idea that it's all for the same reason that they want to abstain, right? Okay, and I, I'll second that and agree.
Can, can you say them again, please, the, the items?
The items are eight, A eleven, eight, B eight, eight, B nine, and they all relate to the YMCA, right? Okay, all in favor of approving all three items, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And abstentions we have?
Abstention.
Lopez and Philbeck. So, yeah, so the motion carries three, two. All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to the action calendar. Item A, Superintendent's Office, there are none. Item B, Educational Services, there are none. Item C, Sopa, there are none. Let's move to item D, Human Resources. It is recommended the Board of Education ratify and approve the appointment of applicant zero seven, two seven, two zero, two, two, zero, one to the position of Vice Principal at Betsy Ross School effective July seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Macalas, second, Ruelis. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five, oh. Dina Mellon?
Thank you. Congratulations to Dr. Sandra Vilas. Dr. Vilas began her teaching career in two thousand five as a teacher in the Moreno Valley School District before moving into the role of site principal. She currently serves the Rialto School District as a reading specialist. Dr. Vilas will join AESD as one of vice principals at Ross School.
Thank you. All right, it's recommended that the Board of Education ratify and approve the appointment of applicant zero seven, two seven, two zero, two, two, dash, zero, two to the position of Curriculum Specialist for the Curriculum and Instruction Department, working with the PK through third-grade program effective July eighteenth. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, Lopez, second, Ruelis. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five, zero. Dina?
Congratulations to Kim Govea. Kim has been part of the Anaheim Elementary School District for twenty-five and a half years. She began as a classroom teacher and has served in that capacity at several different AESD sites. Kim currently serves as a TOSA PD at Revere School. We welcome Kim to her new position as Curriculum Specialist.
Thank you. It's recommended the Board of Education ratify and approve the appointment of applicant zero seven, two seven, two zero, two, two, dash, zero, three to the position of Curriculum Specialist, Expanded Learning Programs, effective July eight, two thousand twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, Macalas, second, Ruelis. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five, zero. Okay, Dina?
Congratulations to Claudia Chambers. Claudia was hired in AESD during the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven school year and worked as a teacher on special assignment at Franklin and Jefferson Schools. She is currently a classroom teacher at Ponderosa School. We welcome Claudia to her new position as a Curriculum Specialist with the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program.
Thank you. It's recommended the Board of Education ratify and approve the appointment of applicant zero seven, two seven, two zero, two, two, dash, zero, four to the position of Leadership Assistant, effective July first, two thousand twenty-two, at, at site to be determined. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Ruelis, second, Lopez. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All in the opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five, zero. It's recommended the Board of Education, wait, we, we don't have, we're good, right? Yeah, it's, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the appointment of applicant zero seven, two seven, two zero, two, two, dash, zero, five, and zero seven, two seven, two zero, two, two, dash, zero, six to the position of Leadership Assistant, effective date to be determined, at site to be determined. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion, Macalas, second, Ruelis. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five, oh. Dina?
Congratulations to the following new ELOP Leadership Assistants. Joji Borman will be at Olive Street School. Elizabeth Peña at Roosevelt School. And Esther Lau will be a Rovine ELOP Leadership Assistant. Congratulations.
Thank you. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the employment agreement with, of Dr. Christopher Downing, Superintendent, effective July first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved, Ruelis, second, Lopez. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five, oh. Dina?
Okay, pursuant to Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, three, subdivision C three, the board provides this oral summary of the salary and fringe benefits as set forth in the proposed employment agreement between Anaheim Elementary School District and Dr. Christopher Downing Superintendent. Contract term effective date, July first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Annual base salary of two ninety-nine oh four three. Any base salary increases or decreases given to other certificated management employees. Contributions to health benefit programs as is paid for other certificated management employees in the same program. Holidays as defined in the Education Code or granted by the board. Work year to consist of two hundred and twenty-two workdays. Sick leave to the same extent as other certificated management employees. Reimbursement for all actual and necessary travel and other business-related expenses incurred in the conduct of his duties. Due's for annual memberships in professional organizations and/or associations approved by the governing board. And reimbursement for actual and necessary expenses reasonably incurred in connection with the performance of his duties for the district up to a maximum of five hundred dollars per month.
Thank you. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the employment agreement of Jesus Chavaria, Assistant Superintendent Administrative Services, effective July first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Macalas, second, Ruelis. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five, zero. Dr. Downing?
Pursuant to Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, three, subdivision C three, the board provides this oral summary of the salary and fringe benefits as set forth in the proposed employment agreement between Anaheim Elementary School District and Jesus Chavaria, Assistant Superintendent Administrative Services. Contract term effective date, July first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Annual base salary of two hundred and four thousand zero zero eight. Any base salary increases or decreases given to other certificated management employees. Contributions to health benefit programs as is paid for other certificated management employees in the same program. Holidays as defined in the Education Code or granted by the board. Work year to consist of two hundred and twenty-two workdays. Sick leave to the same extent as other certificated management employees. Reimbursement for all actual and necessary travel and other business-related expenses incurred in the conduct of his duties. Due's for annual membership in professional organizations and/or associations approved by the governing board.
Thank you. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the employment agreement of Dr. Mary O'Neil Grace, Assistant Superintendent Educational Services, effective July first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Philbeck, second, Ruelis. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five, zero. Dr. Downing?
Pursuant to Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, three, subdivision C three, the board provides this oral summary of the salary and fringe benefits as set forth in the proposed employment agreement between Anaheim Elementary School District and Dr. Mary Grace, Assistant Superintendent Educational Services. Contract term effective date, July first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Annual base salary of two hundred and four thousand eight dollars. Any base salary increases or decreases given to other certificated management employees. Contributions to health benefit programs as is paid for other certificated management employees in the same program. Holidays as defined in the Education Code or granted by the board. Work year to consist of two hundred and twenty-two workdays. Sick leave to the same extent as other certificated management employees. Reimbursement for all actual and necessary travel and other business-related expenses incurred in the conduct of her duties. Due's for annual membership in professional organizations and/or associations approved by the governing board.
It is recommended the Board of Education approve the employment agreement of Dina Mellon, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, effective July first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll give it to Dr. Macalas and then second, Ruelis. You guys okay with that? All right, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five, zero. Dr. Downing?
Pursuant to Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, three, subdivision C three, the board provides this oral summary of the salary and fringe benefits as set forth in the proposed employment agreement between Anaheim Elementary School District and Dina Mellon, Assistant Superintendent Human Resources. Contract term effective date, July first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Annual base salary of two hundred and four thousand eight dollars. Any base salary increases or decreases given to other certificated management employees. Contributions to health benefit programs as is paid for other certificated management employees in the same program. Holidays as defined in the Education Code or granted by the board. Work year to consist of two hundred and twenty-two workdays. Sick leave to the same extent as other certificated management employees. Reimbursement for all actual and necessary travel and other business-related expenses incurred in the conduct of her duties. Due's for annual membership in professional organizations and/or associations approved by the governing board.
Thank you. All right, item E, Administrative Services, there are none. And it takes us to item, item ten, Board Discussion, Board Members, Board Member Activities Related to School Business. Let's start with Trustee Lopez.
Thank you very much, President Alvarez. The only thing I have to report is, I've actually been out of the country for the past twenty-eight days. Spent some time throughout Europe, ten different countries, so I know it was, it was challenging, you know, somebody had to do it, so I ended up doing that. It, it was, it was a great experience because it was actually chaperoning with some of our former AESD students who are now high school graduates. So, you know, Trustee Ruelis has done this a lot in the past, but taking a tour of a group of, we had sixteen students, and they were able to kind of see all of these things that they studied in school. A lot of them were students in Anaheim Union, as I mentioned, had, you know, AP classes, honors classes, studied AP Euro. And so it was a great experience for them, I think, to see what they'd studied and see how tangible and real it is. It's not just in a textbook. But I think it's great because a lot of that success really began here at Anaheim Elementary. So that's why I bring it up, is that a lot of them had already completed their first year of college. Some of them were supposed to go on this trip last summer, but it was postponed because of COVID. So I just wanted to say a short shout-out to our staff here for setting the stage and really the foundation for their successes as they went on to honors, AP classes. They're now high school graduates, all of them. They are, most of them enrolled in universities now. Some of them will be starting their first year of university just in a few weeks. So I just wanted to give a shout-out for that and also, not just for our staff, but also that vertical articulation and collaboration we have with our high school district. So I think it's a really good working partnership that we have. And all the students, by all accounts, are very exhausted, but they had a great experience. So that will conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lopez. Trustee Macalas?
Well, welcome back, Trustee Lopez. I'm glad you, y'all are safe and you had the great time and you brought all the students back. A little jet lag, okay. I really miss those days, traveling with students and trips like that. I have nothing to report, just been surfing a lot, paddle boarding, and spending time with family. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Macalas. Trustee, Ruelis?
Well, besides having a real confession here of having major FOMO, the fear of missing out, and living vicariously through Trustee Lopez's pictures and whatnot that he would post once in a while, you know, same with me. I really have nothing to report, so.
You have a nice tan.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I like that.
Thank you, thank you. I've been definitely being out and about, so.
Thank you, Trustee Ruelis. Trustee Philbeck, do you have a comment?
Just one. I think it was June twenty-eighth, I attended the annual National Two-way Bilingual Immersion Conference Award Luncheon with Dr. Grace and Principal Song at the Riverside Convention Center. And we are very proud of Jefferson Elementary Teacher Ms. Seong Kim because she was named the recipient of the two thousand twenty-two Teacher of the Year Award by the Association of Two-way and Dual Language Education. This award is a national recognition presented to two-way or dual-language educators that have been trailblazers in their communities in their efforts to implement quality two-way bilingual immersion programs. And the Association of the Two-way and Dual Language Education is excited to recognize Ms. Seong Kim and her great work over the years. Her unwavering commitment to bilingualism and biliteracy for the students in her school community will serve as an example to hundreds of two-way and dual-language programs that make up the extensive network of schools in California and throughout the US. And we are just so fortunate to have her in our AESD family. And congratulations to Ms. Seong Kim. It was a very proud moment for us, and I was really excited to go. It was just a great luncheon. And with that, that concludes my comments. Oh, except to say thank you, Brian, and Yessenia and Janice for all the help with this phone call from Turkey Run, Indiana, and allowing me to be able to still participate this evening. I appreciate the help, and you guys are great, and you're always there for us, so thank you.
Thank you, Board Clerk Philbeck. For my report, I actually don't have a report either. We've been out of commission doing other things, right? But I just wanted to end with kind of like some words of encouragement as we gear up for our new school year, right? I want to welcome any new staff that's going to be joining us at our school district. We welcome, welcome you with open arms, and we're so proud of you for deciding to join us, right? So just like excited about any new staff and excited to welcome everybody back to the year as we begin to continue to support our families and our kids as best as we can and see them grow and flourish as, as they become part of our community, right? So I'm just really happy, and I just want to say good luck to everybody, and we wish you well, and we'll be working with you all, okay? That's all I have for my comments. Yeah, yeah, let's move on to future agenda items. Do any trustees have any future agenda items? None? Okay, let's move on to adjournment. Our next regular board meeting will be Wednesday, August seventeenth. I adjourned this meeting at seven, sixteen.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Board Clerk Philbeck.
Bye-bye.